It's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask that Clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a quorum are councilmembers Folcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask that Councilmember Beaumont, please lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, other god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Special Order of Business. And this is item 4.1, Motion to Waive Council Rules of Procedure to Take Action at the February 20th, 2024 meeting. Clerk Wykoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to unexpected absences, we had to cancel our meeting due to lack of quorum last week. So we moved most of the business items to this week. And this is normally a study session where you do not take final action on items. So we're asking for a motion to waive your rules of procedure so we can take action.
Okay, so the request and action is there on the screen. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead. Move to waive Council Rules of Procedure to Take Action at the February 20th, 2024 meeting. Motion from Councilmember Hanford, and second from Councilmember Gamble, for the requested action to move to waive Council Rules of Procedure to Take Action at the February 20th, 2024 meeting. Any discussion on the motion? They're being down. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is item number five. This is a limited public forum for people to speak to the city council during the council meeting. Topics are limited to items on tonight's council meeting agenda and to topics specific to city laws, budget, and operations under the council's authority. Comments that are outside this limited scope will not be allowed. Comments that do not follow the council's rules of procedure will not be allowed. First item to council rules of procedure is amended by the council on December 12th, 2023. Oral public comment is limited to in-person comment only for all city public meetings, including city council and all city boards and commissions until further notice. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Spoken comments that are not within the scope or time limit of this limited public forum can be sent in writing. Information on where to send written comments and to view the rules of procedure is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We will now begin public comment. And we'll start with people who have signed in. And we have Sarah Lundstrom. Invite Sarah to come forward. And please state your name and association with the city and your topic. And then we'll start the timer. Hello. We'll come over and turn it on. And we'll also put the timer up on the screen. So if you just, just a second, Sarah. All right, go ahead, Sarah.
You're going to time my introduction, too? I'm Sarah Lundstrom, and I guard the dignity of Monroe's most vulnerable families at your nonprofit Family Resource Center. Take the next step. And I've been waiting a few weeks to catch you, just to give you an update on what's going on with the Rivers Edge families. So we have 16 families that have been displaced long-term from the Rivers Edge apartment complex due to flooding. And then we have a 17th family that was displaced from a different apartment complex here in town in the same timeframe. So right now, we're working with the county to house these 17 families that are going to be displaced for one to two months. And it's just been kind of an adventure figuring out where they're going to go and managing, working with three different hotels, but they're all safely housed. And we actually have confirmed recently with Snohomish County Legal Services, one of our partners, that they are going to come to a legal clinic just specifically for them to get their questions because there's a lot of gray areas and unknown parts to this situation. But those are 17 families that wouldn't have been housed without this partnership and without your nonprofit Family Resource Center. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah, and thank you for all the work on that. All right, if there is, so that's the only person who signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council this evening? All right, thank you all for being here this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be announcements and presentations, item six. We're going to start off with item 6.1, City Branding Project Update. Director Hassert has asked that I just go ahead and invite Jen Wiley forward. So good evening, and thank you all very much for coming to the meeting in person this evening.
Thank you. And as Mayor Thomas said, my name is Jen Wiley. I'm with J-Ray. I'm a senior advisor there. And I'm joined by my colleague, Julia White. She is an art director, as well as our principal and senior advisor, Bridget Byeth. So thank you for this opportunity to provide an update for all of you on where we are with the process. And you can go to the next one. So today's goal is really just to provide you an update on where we are. Thank you again for this opportunity, and we've really enjoyed getting to know the staff members and community members that have been a part of this process. So thank you. You can go to the next slide. And this is just a reminder, we like to share this slide each time we provide an update, just to remind everybody of who we've been meeting with and discussing the brand with. So we started with an online survey. We've also had several interviews, a couple focus groups. And then we've done some comparisons with other cities similar to Monroe. We've had two brand ambassador workshops. And then in between all of that, we've had several touchpoints with you, with the City of Monroe leadership and brand team. And so that's where we've gone so far. You can go ahead. And this has really been our North Star, is keeping Imagine Monroe front and center in everything that we do. We know that a lot of time and effort was poured into this, and so it's really been a driving force for us throughout the process. Last summer, you might remember that we worked on the Brand Foundation and presented that to you. So this is just a reminder of those three Ps. And we felt that together with the brand leadership team and the brand ambassadors, we came up with these, this personality, position, and promise. So the personality describing Monroe is friendly, supportive, natural, inviting, playful, and vibrant. And your position, where proximity and community converge, naturally you feel at home in Monroe. We come together to experience events, welcome one another, celebrate community, and plan for the future. And finally, Monroe's promise is vibrant, meaningful, is vibrant, meaningful experiences. You will never feel more welcomed than when you're in Monroe. From friendly neighbors to vibrant experiences and diverse opportunities, you will always feel you belong. So tonight, we're going to be presenting some concepts that we've shared with brand ambassadors, brand leadership team, and your senior leadership team. So all six of these concepts have been shared with everybody, and so tonight, we're excited to share them with you. And through this process, we have determined one concept that everybody has felt aligns with Monroe. So at this point, I will hand it over to Julia White.
Thank you, Jen. You can go to the next slide. All right, so this is the concept that we are planning to move forward with. I won't read everything there on the left, but really just the one thing that the brand team really liked about this concept is that there are lots of layers of meaning and symbolism here in this mark. We've obviously got a bird that could be taken a little bit more literally. It could represent a swift, an eagle, any kind of local bird. It also could be taken more figuratively. A bird really represents optimism, hope, forward-thinking. And then that bird also represents a mountain range there. So obviously, we've got a reference to the Cascades. Some folks saw rivers in some of the negative space formed by those mountains. And then some people also saw racing flags in the shape of the wings. So just the fact that different people can see different things represented here really felt like it resonated. Overall, the style is very minimalist, clean, and balanced. Next slide, please. So the key takeaway is that this is the top choice. It was unanimously picked by the leadership team as the concept to move forward with. People really favored those green hues and the really clean sans serif font. And again, different people seeing different things represented really felt like it fit for Monroe. So this is really our next step. One of our main deliverables for this project is to create this whole architecture. So the place brand, being this umbrella brand, and then the look and feel of that is going to trickle down to these different sub-brands. So we're going to have a tourism brand, a city government brand, a residence brand, small business, and economic development. And this is going to be a great way to differentiate messaging for different audiences while also still maintaining this cohesive brand. So our next steps, refine and finalize this chosen concept, develop that aforementioned brand architecture, create brand guidelines for all of those sub-brands and any additional brand assets, and then launching the brand. So that's all we have to show today, but we're happy to go back to any other slides, take any questions.
Thank you very much, Julia. And thank you very much, Jen. Just stay at the podium, please. Oh, talk about flags. So just wanted to see, I don't know who had their flag up first. Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
It's number three. Yeah, there are actually a couple here that are really a variation on a theme. I would actually consider three as being sort of a combination of one and two. And that was just requested throughout this process. There were pieces that people liked from number one and from number two, and I think they came together really cohesively for number three. And then number six was another iteration going in a different direction with the color scheme.
I could add on number six. Number six was just, what would it look like if we thought of like the sun rising over the mountains? And so that's how that color concept came in. It also came in by taking a look at number four and seeing those colors in number four and thinking, what could we do to just make it a little bit different than the blues and greens? So the team was kind enough to show me what that would look like with the color scheme from number four combined with number three. So that's how that came to be. And councilmembers, you know, I don't want you to think that this is like it, right? We want to hear from you, and if this is it, we want to hear that from you if there is something you've got concerns about, right? So I just want to be clear that that's why you're looking at six here, not just looking at one. We wanted to make certain you had the opportunity to see what the team saw as well. Okay, so, and we mentioned that one of the concerns there with the color was the gradient and how that would look on.
Yeah, and actually, I think this is kind of a good representation of that. If you look at this on screen, it starts to get lost right up there around the top of the wings of the bird with that yellow. It just doesn't pack as much of a punch as some of these other color schemes that we pursued. And I think another important thing to remember is that the brand colors are not only the colors that are in the logo. We would be developing a whole palette. So there are opportunities to bring in all these, you know, sunset sunrise colors that can represent different bits and pieces into the brand as a whole. It just might not be in the logo itself. So something to think about.
Another Councilmember, Beaumont, go ahead. And then Councilmember Fisher, you had your.
Okay, one quick question. Was the monochromatic one color versus two color, three color imprinting considered in terms of cost?
Yes, so we would include different, essentially, versions of the logo in the final brand deliverables. We always want to make sure that it's going to look good in every iteration of it. So even though we might have a gradient version as sort of the main one that can be used in digital, we would also have a single color version of it that could be used in a lot of other printing processes, you know, embroidery. There's a lot of things where gradient just doesn't translate. So that would be a part of that whole building out the brand process.
Great, because I know that gets really costly when you're doing, yeah, multiple colors. So it could be that Councilmember Scarborough, maybe we could choose the rainbow look and maybe use just the green for letterhead or that kind of thing to save money. Also, curious about the brand messaging. You had a couple slides back, it was tourism, business, et cetera. I was just wondering if you could explain what that means when you talk about treating the brand and messaging for those different sort of segments or categories?
So was it the slide that had the architecture on it? I think that's a little bit towards the end, just so we can all be looking at it. Yeah. Thank you. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so we haven't quite started working on the messaging, but it's just how we would differentiate the different audiences. So of course, with your tourism, we're trying to, you would be, the goal is to attract people to come and visit Monroe, stay in Monroe. And so that, that brand voice is going to be slightly different from how the city government is going to speak to community members. So as we develop the brand voice, we'll differentiate each one, and we'll be doing that process with, you know, involvement from your brand leadership team, staff, and the brand, or the senior leadership team of your staff.
So would that be more copy-related versus the logo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Hi. I think the only thing I was thinking is going all greens, and we have those new, really big, cool blue signs when we come into Monroe. And I think that, like the mountains with the bird can be looked at as a mountain. It's good, I was just a little bit concerned with, I would like to have everything kind of the same, at least incorporated in there, like maybe Washington being blue or Monroe being blue, something like that. So the colors are the same, and people can relate that to the big signs when they come into the city.
Yeah, and we considered this throughout this process, kind of how much in line with those do we want to stick, or do we want to kind of let it be its own thing, knowing that we can sort of tie them together within the brand guide once we kind of build that out? And that's really where we landed. The mountains, we felt still tie together because this has the representation of a mountain. And then we could literally tie in the blues, because we do want that to feel cohesive, right? That is part of the brand, and that's often what people, the first thing they'll see when they come off the freeway. So we do want to make sure that we tie those together somehow, but we did want the logo to evolve into its own thing and its own right here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
No, that wasn't part of the survey process, but it was the one that rose to the top with senior leadership team, the brand ambassadors, and then also the brand leadership team. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. We will have sort of rounds of revision as our next steps on this. So, you know, as the mayor mentioned, this is not final final, so we will definitely take all of these things into consideration as we continue to polish this. So thank you.
Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I really liked number three. I love the green, but I do share the same concerns about the nice blue signs that we have. So I look forward to seeing more options. But as far as the six, I do like the number three.
Thanks. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Out of these six, I think three is our best bet, but I love our signs. They're new. They are a greeting to everyone coming in the city. I would hate to lose, that's why I like them, because they have the serifs, they've got, they don't look like Star Wars up there on the number one, which is all I can see. And I think the four gets the closest to it on the lettering, but you know, you could still use a little, I just prefer our serifs. And having the capital in smalls versus the all capitals on Washington, I don't know, it just looks a little school-like to me rather than, this is a grown-up city. So, but I have to say, bringing your ideas and presenting them before people who are very critical, you guys are amazing. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so let's just go through this. What their team's going to do is they're going to take what they've heard here tonight, and then they're going to go back and work on some potential revisions. So I'm hearing that there's a preference for three, that the bird/mountain, that concept, that logo is good, that there's an interest in maybe pulling out some of the blues like we see on the monument signs that were just installed. Okay. I heard two people express an interest in having the color variation, but as was mentioned, there could be some cost in that. And the way the colors on the white right there sort of drift in the background is a concern. Does the council want to see a revision that has those colors, or are you good with just going with? Tammy, you said monochromatic, right? Am I using, okay, see, this is a new field for me. Okay. So does the council generally prefer the monochromatic? Are we done with looking at? Okay, all right, so we'll stick with the monochromatic. We'll play with the blues. Councilmember Folcher mentioned the font with the word Monroe there. Is there an interest in revisiting that font? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I am interested in matching somewhat the signs. I think the signs are caps and lowercase, but maybe they're all caps. I don't know. But I'm more interested in matching the signs since they're brand new and they look amazing.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to look at the team and also, Deborah, are there any thoughts on, because you mentioned making the logo and the brand its own thing, and I could see how going with a similar color and a similar font would allow for that consistency. Can you talk a little bit about what the difference is there with it being its own thing versus being more consistent, including the font? So I could see the colors, but when we start talking about font, does, how does that conflict with the idea of having it be its own thing versus being consistent with the monument signs that we have right now?
Yeah, I think we selected, obviously, we started with a lot of different font options, and there were reasons why we narrowed it down to this font option. It echoes the shape of the logo itself, just kind of those clean lines and serifs. Add a little bit more of sort of a classic feel to it versus being sort of fresh and modern is sort of the other side of that, and that's kind of where we ended up with this. That being said, that doesn't mean that you can't use a serif and still make it feel fresh and modern. So I'm not saying this is the final font. I think that's definitely something that we could explore, and we would welcome those, you know, different avenues so that we kind of know where to look for this next iteration there. I will say also that when we started this process, we did all of this sort of brand strategy background work that happened after the signs were already up. And so we just didn't want that to direct us necessarily unless it felt like it was in line with what we kind of discovered throughout that whole process. And I don't think it's conflicting. We still ended up in this direction, and I think there is still opportunity to tie it together a little bit better.
One of the concerns I seem to remember was wanting to make certain we had a font that you could actually get on a keyboard, right? As opposed to ordering something like our current logo, I don't, we'd probably have to buy the alphabet letters for that, right?
Yeah, and I can speak to that. It's a big part of our branding process that we need it to be usable and accessible for the people that need to be using it. And so we always recommend fonts to be used with the brand. They don't necessarily have to be the same fonts that are in the logo. They might be, but we will select fonts that are available. And we usually have a set of design fonts, and those are usually Google fonts. And so those are things that you can use on like your website and things like that if you wanted to tie that together. And then we actually have a separate set of fonts that we call system fonts, and we literally pick fonts that are available on, you know, Windows computers that still feel in line with the brand, just so that you can have that cohesiveness everywhere.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
It would really help me in thinking through some of this, and thank you for your presentation, by the way. I realized I did not thank you for that. They look great. Councilmember Scarborough, I like the idea of the rainbow because we're trying to be more inclusive, accommodating, everyone feels they belong. We've, you know, that whole rainbow feel of that color I like, but I understand it's very expensive to reproduce and may not be in our best interest cost-wise, et cetera. The question I have for you is, can you let us know how this logo will be used? Letterhead, what other signage in town? That would help me sort of really think this through if I knew where I would see it and in what application.
I think the goal would be, I mean, the sky's the limit. I do not know if we are going to be redesigning any physical signage. However, I know that this brand will be applied across lots of digital and print platforms. So I would expect that it would extend into the website. I would expect that it would extend into social media, especially all the different branches, for example, the tourism-specific social media, et cetera. And then certainly, you know, brochures, direct mail, really just, and letterheads, anything that's coming from the city, just so that people understand what the source is and that they can trust it and that they know where that communication is coming from.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we'll proceed with working on number three then. And what are our next steps? When can county, do you like that? When can the council plan to hear from us again, to hear from you again?
Well, once we're done refining and finalizing not only the chosen concept, but that whole brand architecture system, and we've created the brand guidelines and assets, at that point, we would be able to present the final brand to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be item 6.2, the 2024 Economic Development Annual Report. Administrator Nate.
Should do an intro. No, no, come on up. I just wanted an opportunity to introduce councilmembers to Patrick Doherty. You've probably have seen his name around town. He is our Economic Development Coordinator. His effective start date was January 1, and he worked very closely with James Palmer as James was transitioning out to bring Patrick on board. So Patrick's been working for us since the beginning of the year, and we were talking earlier before the meeting, and he was telling me how he was already going downtown and meeting with our downtown business owners. He speaks fluent Spanish and so has been able to talk with some of our business owners in their native language. The reason why he's here tonight, though, is to actually present the economic, the annual economic development report. James Palmer actually got it started before he left, and Patrick had the opportunity to finish it up. So I asked Patrick to come and present this in person, just because he hasn't had the opportunity to meet with you and see you in person. So this is his first introduction, is doing the economic development report. So I'll let him go ahead and explain what's in it.
Thank you very much for I could say that in Spanish. Very nice to be here, Mayor Thomas, councilmembers. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be here first time and meet you all. So as Deborah just said, I'm going to, in between, look in it, and you can probably open that to fill the whole screen so that it'll be more, or not, anyway. You've received a copy of it, but it's more for the public, I think, to hear the presentation of what's in this, because of course you have it. And as Deborah stated, this is really the final presentation that James Palmer made, and I just kind of polished it up to get it published. So I'm representing it, but I'm not necessarily the one who authored everything, so I can't take all the credit. take all the credit. And the other message I want to say as we go through this and just as you read it on your own is, we, of course, will do another one next year, and it's really open. If you see things that you'd like to see included or things you think maybe aren't as helpful, you can let me know, you can let Deborah know, just during the year, really, just things that you'd like to see in this report. So, but with that, as you can see, we go to the next slide. Hopefully, the whole page will open. Yeah, it doesn't, I think maybe that window has to grow or something. Yeah, okay. That's just how it is. All right. But you can see it up close on your screen, hopefully. Obviously, there's a message from our mayor, as there should be at the very beginning of the report, and the mayor highlights the four main objectives of our economic development strategy, which are highlighted there in those four bullets, to support community-driven organizations that promote economic development here in Monroe, maintain dynamic communication between the business community and elected officials and also staff, build and foster relationships with our regional partners, which you'll see in a little while here, and of course, seek opportunities to grow the business community through business recruitment, retention, and expansion, which we'll talk about as well. So, the first thing that the report does after that, thank you for moving, is, well, actually, the very first thing it talks about is the dovetailing with our upcoming comprehensive plan update, which you, of course, know about, and the Vision 2050. And you'll see at the bottom there on that page in blue, you'll see that kind of a summary of Vision 2050, which is not just economic development, that's in general the comprehensive plans, Vision 2050, related to growing in the future. And obviously, the economy and economic development are a key part of how we grow in the future. The next page summarizes our very valuable Economic Development Advisory Board, and I think it's important, I'll just read one part here because the public may hear this, that the purpose of the Economic Development Advisory Board, we call EDAB, is to provide a forum for local civic and business leaders in our business community to develop, discuss, and promote ideas, policies, and programs, and present those ideas to the mayor, to the council, and city staff, which would then intend to promote economic vitality in the city. That's the reason we have the board. And you can see there in the table, the list of the folks, and just because they're valuable folks, I'll name them for the public to hear. We've got John Wims, Janelle Drews, Carl Niemela, Sally Petty, James Reyna. There's a vacant position that I think soon should be filled, and Katie Woods, of course. The next page talks, shows our regional partners, and this is, they are really invaluable. The Puget Sound Regional Council, Washington State Department of Commerce, the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County, actually has this annual meeting tomorrow. Obviously, our local Monroe Chamber of Commerce, and as well, the Sky Valley Chamber of Commerce. Those are the partners we work with. And I can tell you that as recently as a couple days ago, I got an email from the Economic Alliance, from their interim director, stating that there was an industrial user looking for space, particularly interested in East County, and so we immediately were able to respond with some opportunities. May or may not work for them, obviously, but that's what you do. And the Department of Commerce and the Economic Alliance are the bodies that particularly parties from outside of Washington or outside of our region are going to come to. They don't necessarily know Monroe. They see it on a map. They don't necessarily know that much about it, but they do know they want to be in the greater Puget Sound area. They may know they want to be in this county because it's near a lot of manufacturing or Boeing, and so they just send it to the county organization. And that comes out to us, and we respond right away when those opportunities arise. So, those partners are incredibly important. And of course, the Department of Commerce has really just amazing amount of information, opportunities for grants for the small businesses, and we put that in our monthly newsletter. So, thank you. Business recruitment, retention, and expansion are kind of the underpinnings of any community's economic development strategy. And I will tell you that retention and expansion are probably even more important than recruitment. Recruitment's the one that you sort of say, it's the sort of attractive sounding one when you're at a cocktail party, you go, we're attract, hopefully recruiting the next big company into town. And of course, you want that. But the statistics show that the majority of jobs, job growth, comes from the expansion of your existing business base. That's just a nationwide statistic. So, it's really important to retain the businesses that you can, and you do that through good relationships with your business, individually with the businesses, a good environment for business, which comes from everything from city government to facilities, utilities, services, safety, et cetera, and just really good communication. Now, recruitment, of course, comes in the way I just said, being responsive to the opportunities that come up, because it's really hard for a city of this size to be out there recruiting to beyond the region and the nation, even beyond our country sometimes, because that's, you know, fishing in a, in the whole ocean. So, you have to be responsive and show through everything from the website, social media, and just the immediate response to inquiries, that we're a place that means business and, you know, come here and consider us. So, that's how recruitment mostly happens at the size of the community. And then, the next section is Monroe by the numbers. And the, this is just a selection of demographics, and again, if you would like to see other ones in the future, please let me know. Obviously, there's always a demographic about how the population is growing. You will see different figures for our population, and I'll just tell you that the U.S. Census and the local, you know, Washington State Office of Financial Management, who does a yearly update in April, are always different. And I've found over the years that the Washington State figure is probably more reliable because they actually contact the communities. They even ask for the building permits that have closed that year and the number, you know, for single-family and multifamily development. So, they do a deeper dive, and so that's why I tend to use the OFM one, Office of Financial Management, as you see here in the graph, which in 2023 was estimated at 20,590. Sometimes you'll see a 19,000 number from the Census. Recent ethnicity, we've got a graph there. I think just to quickly say, obviously, that the number one racial or ethnic group after white is Hispanic-Latino community, and that's growing, so that's good to know. The average income, you'll see a number there. Again, you'll see sometimes median income and sometimes mean or average. Average is a higher number when you do the math. So, I think for a publication that may go out to inquiring parties, it's nice to show the higher number, because it is true. That's not funny statistics or anything, it's just actual average income is 129,000, almost 130,000. That's really grown quite a bit over the years and shows the impact of the influx of lots of folks into this community. Median age is there, and the workforce, I won't read all those numbers. And then, we go to, the next page has one mile, two mile, one mile, three mile, and five mile radii, and then a kind of deeper dive on those. I'm not going to really read all that, but that's important because we recognize that Monroe is only so big, as you can see on that map at the top of the page, but it's the center for at least a five-mile area, probably even more as you go sort of up the valley. So, these population and income figures for those concentric circles is really important. Again, especially for retailers wanting to know what their market could be if they locate here. And then, we have the workforce breakdown. I'll just quickly say, as you can tell, the bottom of the page, that really high in services, which is a huge category, construction and manufacturing is the top, the top three areas for the workforce. And then, the next page breaks those down a little bit more. Again, the industry sector is, services is way out in front at almost half the jobs, and then manufacturing, retail, and construction being the next big components. And then, occupations kind of follow that, but it's interesting, what are the jobs? Professional jobs are highest category, so that's really good to know, but followed closely by services, management, administration. Those are a lot of jobs in those areas. Let's see, next, we have unemployment. The state used to track unemployment down to the city level, and they don't now. So, all we can do is say the county, which is really not that terribly helpful to be able to portray exactly what's happening here in Monroe, but the county is basically the average unemployment, even nationwide, we're at 4%, at least we were in November. And so, there's no big story there. Good to know that we're not higher, and certainly not a lot lower. And you can see that the unemployment, obviously, ever since the pandemic times has come way down, as you can see in that graph there in the middle of the page. And then, towards the bottom of that page, this is just showing business license activity. This is not all, excuse me, not all of these business licenses are for businesses in Monroe. They're for businesses that do business in Monroe, so they may be located somewhere else. But you can just see a steady growth over the past three years, three or four years in business license activity. So, that shows that there's a lot of business happening in Monroe, most of which is located here, but also others that do business here with us. Next page shows the, excuse me, next page shows housing starts, and you can see a pretty good start to recovery in the single-family there, that that sort of yellow or amber line going up with the 97 single-family building permits. That was only through October, so actually more, over 100 in 2023, which is substantially up from the previous years during, during and right after the pandemic. Obviously, everything was very slow. Multifamily's still somewhat flat, but there's a lot of room for growth there, and we anticipate to see that in the future. Tax collections, which is lower here on the page, you can see that, if you can see the colors there, there's that sort of yellow amber color and then the gray in the columns, and then below, a different kind of column. We have been, the yellow is the, what we budget, what we hope for, when we do our budget every year in sales tax collection. And you can see that we've been above budget in the gray bar consistently. So, that shows two things, that we budget prudently, and we don't overbudget, but we also have a robust economy, so that's good. And it's, I think it's interesting to note, and it's in bold there above the tables, that our top five categories for sales tax collection are retail trade, construction, food services, wholesale, and administration, and support, waste management, remediation services. Okay, now, we can go back to the business survey. So, as you probably know, we put out a survey towards the end of every year, and that's the final piece of every annual report to our business community. You can see a graph that shows the response rate was a little bit down this last year at 4.82%. So, that's a, I've already marked that as an issue that we need to look at how we get it out there, look at what the messaging is, how much we put it out, and how we do that and really try to get a higher response, but still valid responses, though. And the summary is that the businesses remain optimistic for this year. Most anticipate keeping their staffing levels or even potentially growing their staffing. There is a concern about rising costs and some supply chain issues, and there's some concern about finding qualified candidates to fill the positions that are available. So, now, this is just a summary for the next couple pages about the main questions. And the one I just mentioned a moment ago was confidence. So, the key finding there is that the majority of respondents are confident that their sales will be better in '24 than even '23, with over 71% saying they're extremely, that's, excuse me, somewhat to extremely confident in that. Biggest obstacles for vitality are basically, of course, higher costs, and you can see a breakdown in the table of all the different components, cost increases being the largest one at 68%, and then some other ones there are smaller. But that's the number one is cost increases, and we hear about that, you know, all over. Get to the next page, and this is the workforce, and you'll see the key finding, almost 90% of the respondents would anticipate keeping or even expanding workforce in '24. So, that's good. The few that did say they may decrease, it's just a few percentage indicated is mostly because of cutting costs in response to those higher costs in other areas. And we asked them about the adequacy of their physical space. This gives us a clue as to how many businesses might start to be outgrowing their space, because I mentioned, again, we want those businesses to expand because that's how we grow the most jobs in a local economy, except we don't want them to expand so much that then they leave. I mean, it's great for them that they're growing, but we don't want them to leave. So, we asked people, how is your space? And a strong percentage responded that their face, their physical spaces are perfect. It was interesting that they used their perfect for their current needs. Well, a small number, of course, indicated concern about their spaces being too small or having other concerns related to maybe where they're located, safety, visibility, issues like that. But it's good that the strong number are happy with their spaces, so that's good. And then, this one, this is asking them what things we can do in the city to help them grow. And there's just a table there, and if you look at the, on the right, of course, are the things, like communicating, face-to-face meetings, help with finding grants and loans, keeping inventory of available properties. And then, you can see on the left, I just said that backwards, on the left is, on the right, you can see the scoring with the highest to the lowest, and the highest is communications. And that's, as I said before, how you maintain, part of how you maintain a good business environment is you really communicate and make sure that business owners know that they can contact the city when they have a concern or share an idea or whatever, and not feel like we're at odds with each other. So, that's really great, and like any relationship, communications. And then, these business, these last page has the open-ended question at the end of the survey, which asks folks, you know, what could we do other than structured ones we already asked? What else can we do to help your business grow or just help you? And this is a summary, I'm obviously not going to read all of them, but you can see, if you have a chance to read that, that, you know, some of the things like promoting manufacturing, enhancing signage, talking about signage, people are always interested in signage. There is a concern about folks that are maybe camping or abusing substances or having difficulty in the streets, and so, some people mentioned that, but that wasn't as high as many other issues, but they raised it. Interested in, are there grant opportunities or loans? And there are a lot through the state especially. I love that several people commented that the downtown looks great, says, nice job, keep it up. So, that was not just a single comment, that was several. Interested in lighting up the alleys, maybe paving places that might be having puddles, increased parking in downtown, which we've already done by acquiring the festival lot, enhancing police presence, shouldn't read them all, but anyway, keeping business costs as low as possible. Finish 522, many people said that. Not that it's up to the city to do that, but as you know, we always lobby for that down in Olympia and beyond. Then, there's an appendix with the detailed information from some of these demographic statistics, I'm certainly not going to go through, but you have that there. And then, at the end, we just have a summary of some of the most salient resources for small businesses, like obviously the Chamber, the Washington State Small Business Development Center, amazing resource, free resources for any business, the plug for that, and SCORE, which is provided by volunteers, the Small Business Development Center's paid employees, but both SCORE and SBDC provide free one-on-one business counseling and assistance. So, that's a really great resource. And then, the state has put together a small business guide, which is online, which has a huge amount of resources as well. So, we put that in there for folks to access, and of course, Deborah's in my information on the back. And again, that's it. Sorry, I probably went too long, but let me know again, just during the year, things that you'd like to see in this for the future.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions or comments at this time?
I wish I could take all the credit, but thanks.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item number seven, the Consent Agenda, and I turn to the council. Councilmember Walker. Sure. If you hit your mic, yeah. What, which one?
7.1.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and pull item 7.1. That's a 2024 January payroll claims.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mustn't be the right one then. 7.10.
Oh, 7.10. Okay, 7.10.
Travel status policy resolution.
Okay, so we would call that 7.10?
Okay. Thank you.
And that is travel status policy resolution, so we'll go ahead and pull that from the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda except for 7.10?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda beside 7.10.
Anford, second. Okay, thank you. So, the motion was to move to approve the consent agenda except for item 7.10. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Gimble.
I'll get the flag down eventually.
Yes, okay. Probably in 18 months and then we'll.
No, I just, I know there's folks in the audience that are here in relation to item 7.8 on the consent agenda, and I just wanted to vocalize, I see the support, and the support that the city has for the food bank is there. So, just glad that we're able to do that addendum and happy that we're able to pass it tonight. So, thanks for coming out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda except for 7.10? Okay, saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. So, we're going to go ahead and pull up item 710, and going to invite Zach Humphries forward or Becky, whoever. And why don't you go ahead and, Councilmember Walker, you had a question on it or?
I was rereading it right before you. I was rereading it right before you or right before the consent agenda came up, but there is a part in there about auto liability insurance. And I'm sorry, it's my area of expertise, but there's just a line about saying that your personal insurance has to be the primary. And I'm trying to recall that. So I don't I don't know how the Washington Auto Liability Fund works. And I'm sorry, I didn't expect that there'd be conversation directly tonight. That was only, I guess, my only concern.
That's a great question, and I wish I went to school to study insurance.
What?
And my colleague Deborah Knight's going into that question.
It's an excellent resolution.
Stop passing the buck. Actually, I was the former president of Washington City's Insurance Authority. But actually, that is a requirement. So auto liability insurance goes with the vehicle, so not with the driver. So if you're driving your personal vehicle and you're in an accident, even if you're on city business, your auto insurance, your personal auto insurance is primary.
I don't I don't want to get in the weeds on insurance, but there's.
We can we can follow up after this if you've got a concern.
I'm going to start talking non-owned auto and commercial stuff. So yeah, I would love that. Thank you.
We could do that. Excellent.
Yep.
So do we want to proceed with this tonight, or do you want to bring it back to the future agenda?
I think we should just proceed with it. Wait, what did you say? Let's bring it back. I'm sorry.
Certainly.
Not to say that this isn't an excellent resolution.
And it has absolutely nothing to do with the work that Zach Humphries has done on this.
Right.
Becky?
Would you like to come forward, please?
So we can just shake the mic?
Thank you.
There is in.
So there were actually two resolutions this evening where the original resolution had the two of them together, and we have split them out. The other one was adopted tonight, which then leaves us with this gray area around travel and because these also then replace that first one. And so we've got half of it now replaced. The other half is still left hanging. Doesn't mean you can't delay it. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
And Councilmember Hanford had his flag up, so please please stay at the podium.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just was going to say, I when I read the packet, I did notice that there was a time that said it needs to be passed as soon as possible.
Okay, so is that because we have people traveling or? All right. So do we?
We have a we have a council meeting next week. It's an action meeting. One week is not going to make any difference. We can bring it back next week. That means that Zach only has half the to-do list item that crossed off the list, which is just a personal goal of his.
So we don't have any, we don't have anything, like you said, only part of it got adopted tonight. Is there going to be an issue in the next week?
Of course.
So item seven point nine, if you notice, the resolution number is twenty twenty-four point zero zero three. In sort of the strategic lineup in order to associate the two resolutions together, the it was staff recommended the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-four zero zero two, which repeals the existing travel and reimbursement policy that the city is currently operating under. Since that resolution is passed or adopted and the existing policy goes away, that makes room for the city council to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four zero zero three. So all that to say, because seven point one zero was adopted or was not adopted tonight, which is the resolution that precedes seven point nine, resolution number twenty twenty-four zero zero three, they were kind of adopted in the wrong order. So we have, at the moment, two two policies existing at the same time.
But we will make it work.
But we'll make it work.
We don't need to amend the previous motion to approve the consent agenda to remove.
Clarify how those two interact with each other.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I would just like to clarify, and and it's necessary to mention that this is a part of me being a novice, my understanding of the consent agenda is that when you want to continue discussing something, not necessarily in this meeting, that you first pull it, and then it would be discussed maybe outside of the meeting. That was my understanding. My mistake there. If I am the only one that wanted to look into something further, I.
No, you're you're fine. Yeah. So so Councilmember Walker, the way that the way that it goes is when you pull something from the agenda, usually that means you'd like to have it as a separate item because you don't want to vote in favor of it. We don't want anybody to vote for to feel like you have to vote against paying the bills, right, when there's one item out of twelve that you disagree with. So if you're going to vote against it, pull it. Then if you've got a question about it, pull it, and we'll always bring staff up to answer any questions. Usually what happens is council then will consider whether or not they want to take action this evening, or, as in this case, have it come back to them. And so we will always have this conversation to figure out if there's a timing issue, that kind of thing. And so your colleagues are fine with it coming back, and that's what we're going to do.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, staff.
All right, cool. Thank you very much. We are now done with the consent agenda. We're going to go ahead and move on to new business under eight, and the first one will be eight point one, Economic Development Advisory Board Appointment, and Mr. Humphries will come back up.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor interviewed a member of the community to fill the vacant position six on the Economic Development Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and Anjim Tureen is here in the audience tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Anjim, I'd like to invite you to come forward and just introduce yourself to the council and just explain a little bit why you're interested in serving on the Economic Development Advisory Board.
I'm short.
It's okay.
Hi, my name is Anjim Tureen. I'm grateful for the opportunity to address the council and the mayor tonight. I am interested in the appointment because I am now a business owner in Monroe. I had the opportunity in twenty twenty-one to take over an existing business when the owner was retiring. I moved back to the valley in twenty twenty, when, like so many people, I had to pivot. And I actually grew up in Monroe. We moved here in nineteen ninety-two from the East Coast, and I went to Monroe High School for all four of my high school years. And I've lived in various different places in Western Washington over the years. I owned a home in Everett for many years, and I lived in Skagit County most recently before moving back. So we've been operating the business here in Monroe now for two and a half years, and it's been it's been a very interesting experience. And I was recently thinking about different ways that I could get more involved in the community and just, you know, as a as a business owner now, it's a different aspect of the community that I didn't have, you know, access to before as just a resident. So I was made aware of the vacancy, and so I applied, and now I'm here.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions or motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Fulter.
Man, I should just put it on ahead of time. Anyway, Anjim, thank you so much for volunteering for this. As a fellow business owner, it's very important that your voice is heard, and besides that, you have plans, so I'm very excited about that. So I would like to make a motion to move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Anjim Tureen to the Economic Development Advisory Board, position six, a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, effective immediately.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulter, a second from Councilmember Gimbel for the requested action in new business agenda item eight point one. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Gimbel.
No, no discussion. Just thank thank you for coming forward and volunteering. It'd be great to have your your voice. So thanks.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
And I'm going to say the same thing. I love it when people volunteer to be involved in our community. So thanks a ton for doing that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations, board member. All right, the next item on the agenda is new business item eight point two, Monroe Thirty Annexation, setting a date for initial meeting to commence annexation, and we have our planner, senior planner Bright.
Good evening. As Mayor Thomas mentioned, I'm just here tonight to notify you that an annexation petition was submitted to the city. It's called Monroe Thirty. It's about thirty acres east of the mountains and west of Robin Headline. Per state law, city council must set a date for a meeting with the initiating parties of the proposed annexation. I have penciled in next Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, for that meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Turn to the council. Councilmember Gimbel, go ahead.
I'm going to move to set February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four as an initial meeting with the initiating parties of the Monroe Thirty Annexation in accordance with RCW thirty-five A dot one four dot one twenty to evaluate the proposed annexation and determine whether to accept, reject, or modify the annexation boundary.
Second, Scarborough.
The motion from Councilmember Gimbel, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action in the new business item eight point two is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Saw your hand go up. I said all opposed, your hand went up. Oh, we don't have an abstain anymore. Oh, we do. That's a different story. Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number zero zero one, twenty twenty-four, amending the twenty nineteen Shoreline Master Program SMP for first reading with senior planner Marrero. Please come forward. Good evening.
Just kind of pull up my presentation here.
Okay. Hey, Zach, how are you doing tonight? While we're getting things pulled up.
Very good, Mayor. How are you, sir?
Good, thanks.
Hello, counsel.
Do you see everybody's hands go up?
Where'd he go? Oh, there he is.
They're just waving at the monitor.
I like your your new hairdo.
Me too, Zach. All right, back to our regularly scheduled program.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to present the proposed amendments to the Shoreline Master Program. Just going to minimize this real quick. The intent of the Shoreline Master Program or SMP is to carry out the responsibilities assigned to the city of Monroe by the Washington State Shoreline Management Act. Oops, sorry. And to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a guide to regulations for the future development of the shoreline resources of the city of Monroe. The city is mandated to conduct a periodic review of its SMP as required by the SMA every ten years. So this is a map of the city's shoreline environment designations. And as you can see, most of the shoreline jurisdiction includes parklands, city-owned parks, and open space areas. The city began working on the SMP periodic update in twenty eighteen, and the original deadline for the project was June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. The SMP was adopted by council on August thirteen, twenty nineteen, by ordinance number zero one five, twenty nineteen. The city did receive conditional approval from the Department of Ecology on October twentieth of twenty twenty. The reasoning for these amendments tonight is because it's part of the conditional approval that we received from ecology. Ecology found changes identified in Attachment B, which is included in the packet, and it goes through more in depth on what is required by DOE, and this is needed for consistency with the city's updated SMP and reference critical area regulations and to ensure that the policies of the SMA and the SMP. So the SMP amendments are minor in nature. I just summarized them here on the slide. So the first one is to clarify the city's definition of shoreline jurisdiction. The second one is changing any references to the critical areas regulations in the SMP to reflect the current code chapter reference. The right now, it's 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 not correct. The third one is to update the critical area regulation stream development standards. Also, we need to add the definition of fish habitat. And then there was a minor error on the current map that I showed a couple slides back. So right now, the map is showing that the CADMAN site is urban conservancy. And if you look at the SMP document, it actually states that it should be high intensity, and this allows for CADMAN to continue their operations. So that's all we're doing. We're just changing the designation from urban conservancy to high intensity. We did receive some public agency comments. The first one was from Washington Department of Natural Resources or DNR. So their comments were general in nature, and we will consider this in the next update and also during the comprehensive plan update. But for now, we're just focusing on the required amendments that we need to do from ecology. The second one was from the Tulala tribes. And then just to quote their comment, they strongly disagree with the high-intensity developments in the flood plains, and this is in relation to the CADMAN site. But like I said earlier, this is it was already in the in the original document that we worked on in twenty nineteen, and that was adopted in twenty twenty. And it needs to stay as high high intensity, like I said, for CADMAN operations to continue. And then the last comment was from the Snoqualmie tribe, and they also commented on adding the definition of fish habitat, which is which is a WAC requirement, and we're doing that. So that satisfies this comment. The public hearing was held at the Planning Commission meeting on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended the Monroe City Council approved the proposed mass Shoreline Master Program amendments identified by project number CPA twenty twenty-three oh four. So the recommended action tonight for the council is to move to accept as first reading ordinance number zero zero one slash twenty twenty-four, amending the twenty nineteen Shoreline Master Program to incorporate the Washington State Department of Ecology changes to the SMP for the final approval certification of Monroe's SMP, adopting supportive legislative findings, providing for survivability, and establishing an effective date. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or motion? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping Councilmember Gimbel was still here so he could read this long one. Thank you, Ms. Marrero. I move to accept as first reading ordinance number zero zero one, twenty twenty-four, amending the twenty nineteen Shoreline Master Program SMP to incorporate the Washington State Department of Ecology, changes to the SMP for the final approval certification of Monroe's SMP, adopting supportive adoptive adopting supporting legislative findings, providing for survivability, and establishing an effective date. Somebody better say.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action for the new business item eight point three is shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is item eight point four under new business. This is Emergency Voucher Fund, EHF, Washington Department of Commerce, voucher program contact with Stonemish County contract with Stonemish County Contract Number twenty twenty-four zero one one. And this has Ms. Adams.
Hello, Mayor and Monroe City Council. This is Rachel Adams.
This is Rachel Adams, Human Services Coordinator. I'm sorry, I wasn't feeling 100% this afternoon. So, and there are some key people in my life that are sick, so I didn't want to chance spreading any illness to anyone in the council tonight. This item is, it recently came to you in December of 2023 on consent as an acceptance of funds and is now coming back to review and authorize the mayor to enter into the contract with the Snohomish County Human Services Department to implement this East County motel voucher program. Volunteers of America Western Washington was our partner agency and co-applicant on the application that was approved by Snohomish County. And the purpose of this funding is to provide temporary shelter to those experiencing homelessness for all of East County. This would, this grants that we're receiving from the county would generate $592,192 into this program with $12,192 for City of Monroe administrative fiscal agent costs. And the reimbursement period would cover activities between December 1st through June All of the, beginning at about Attachment C on the attached documents will be the budget and reporting requirements that the county is requiring of the City of Monroe and that VOA submitted. So with that, pretty much all of the information that will be incorporated into the City of Monroe's contract with VOA is here for you. And just happy to answer any questions council members might have, and hopefully get those funds into the hands of those who need it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions or a motion? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Rachel, thank you for your work on this wonderful program. I'm happy to make a motion to approve the Emergency Housing Fund, EHF, Washington State Department of Commerce, Commerce, motel voucher program contract with Snohomish County Contract Number 2024011.
You have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fulcher. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I am gonna vote in favor of this too, but I did have a question. I just wanted to make sure for clarification, Ms. Adams, so who is, who is going to be overseeing and validating receipts and making sure that the funds are being expended correctly?
Yeah, so there are several players at work on this one. VOA is going to be our lead agency, the City of Monroe, and I will be handling the reimbursement and approving the funds that they are submitting for, or the receipts that they're submitting for reimbursement. And then I will also be submitting to the county for reimbursement of our reimbursement. So that's kind of how that shakes out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have a few questions, because I was kind of digging in and reading more. Because I didn't remember, I guess I must have missed it when we talked about it, that it was a low-barrier entrance on this, or intended for low barrier, meaning, you know, it could be, you know, somebody could be drug addiction. We don't, there's a lot of stuff that goes with that. And it says in the write-up, however, you know, it will be in the coordinated entry system. So maybe you could explain, because there's a lot of concerns. I mean, you know, you're spending dollars on someone that's not a citizen, that may be, you know, drug addicted. We can't, a low barrier, you can't ask even if they have legal problems at their particular, you know, point in time. So help me out with that.
Right. So, yes, this particular program administered through the county is low barrier, which means that, that there, there are very few requirements to admission into these services. However, the main requirement is that the person be enrolled in the county's 211 coordinated entry system, have a homeless information management system number attached to them, so they'll be working with a housing navigator and have a housing action plan. This program specifically targets East County, so the priority pool is something that comes up countywide in order to house people and move them into more sustainable housing. This program is going to focus specifically on East County. And while it doesn't have large barriers attached to it, it is going to target our most vulnerable people who are working with a housing navigator and have a housing action plan so that they can be moved into sustainable housing. So with those qualifiers all working together, I feel like it's, it will help people move out of their situations in the most, in, in the most friendly, non-barrier, low-barrier way possible, to be able to help resolve some of those concerns that might be root causes of homelessness.
Thank you. If you have further?
Go ahead. Yeah, no, I got lots. So the, and if I read correct, so, well, I guess the first thing, question I would add, so if Monroe didn't do this, if we weren't, because we're basically, would be facilitating for all of East County, right?
Yes.
There's actually revenue attached to this, if I'm not mistaken. But the, if we were not to step up and say, hey, we're going to facilitate this, would there be, would the county facilitate the program? Or would someone else facilitate the program for East County?
I honestly don't know. They opened it up for cities to apply for in East County. So that was the, the key requirement, is that VOA could not apply for these funds on their own. So, yeah, that was, I, and I think Monroe is unique in the sense that they have the largest capacity to, to oversee these funds in the cities that are composing the Sky Valley, East County area.
And then just, I guess, the other question would be just from a liability, is there a liability, added liability to the city with us facilitating with the low entry?
I haven't. I'd have to go back and reread the contract to see what the liability section reads, but Rachel may recall what the liability is, because we're the fiscal agent.
Correct. I just want to understand, I want to understand that. I mean, get me wrong, I've been a part of the homeless advisory policy committee, all that type of stuff, but, I mean, we're, these are, everything up until this point has not been about a low-barrier entry for us. So that's why, when I saw it, I have, I have questions. So, I mean, I, and the reason why I'm asking, if someone's going to do it anyway, that's why I'm asking that question, I would rather us be in the decision-making, you know, process. You know, I don't know. I mean, I, I have a lot of questions where I don't know if I could, while I support the effort that we're doing, I don't know if we have, for me personally, it has the guardrails in place that we were, that were intended, but we started down this path, for me personally.
Rachel, could you share with council the interest in this program from our, from our outreach team? Because the outreach team has been waiting for this program for, I think, an extended period of time.
Yeah, so our, so some of this request is fulfilling some of our Monroe Police Department Community Outreach Team's hopes to get individuals into housing so that they can be stabilized and then be sta, become stable enough so that they can make appointments for things that would help to resolve their homeless issues. So that, that, that's coming from our outreach officer and embedded social worker, and also our, some of our other community partners. We also do have funding that is a separate program that will be coming back to you all next week, that is through City of Monroe's General Fund, that dollars in Human Services awards, that has a little bit more control what you're asking for, Councilmember Gamble, on, on reporting requirements and who can enter those, that type of a program. It wouldn't be low barrier, it would be targeted specifically to, to individuals. This, this funding, though, is state funding passed down through the county and then to us as the fiscal agent, and VOA would have to carry the insurance liability through our contract for professional services, to my understanding.
Yeah, I guess, from my, I'm totally in support of that. My, just as I'm reading through, is there anything, or can we guarantee, from this data, guarantee is probably a bad word, be reasonably confident that we're not going to be placing someone in one of our hotels, or in the Sultan Hotel, any, any in the East County, right? That the individual that we're placing is addicted to drugs, has outstanding warrants, and maybe not be a citizen?
I think that some of those concerns are addressed through the coordinated entry system, not necessarily drug use, though that is something that is a barrier to housing and would be worked on with a housing navigator, certainly. But I think that some of those, some of those concerns are, are managed through the coordinated, the county's coordinated entry system. And the City of Monroe would just be acting as a fiscal agent in this case.
I would be interested in seeing, because I didn't, did I miss it? Was it in the packet, the coordinated, or any, an overview on the coordinated entry system?
No, that was not in the packet.
Okay. I would be interested in seeing that before I felt confident, you know, avoiding, I, I am all for, I just, that, you know, and you, you might have a, you know, a majority without me, but I just think from doing our due diligence for the citizens, at least to see that side of the equation, I personally would think that that would be the responsible thing to look at. That's, and, you know, for the drug addiction part, you guys all know my stance on that. I think we get them into treatment. I mean, if we've got somebody that needs, you know, housing and is addicted to drugs, then we should be working the treatment route where we've had some success, you know, on that, on that front. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I'm not an expert on the 211 and the coordinated care, or the coordinated entry program. What I do know about it is that, and I'm sure Ms. Adams can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but, in fact, maybe you could explain, tell me if this, if this is incorrect, but the people that are going to be utilizing these hotel rooms, I believe, when they're at this juncture, they're already gone through, like, a pretty good amount of vetting, and are already, they're not people that are just down on the alley of Blakely or whatever street, and picking on you. And then, all of a sudden, they're in a hotel. These are people that are working to get, that the police are helping and working with to get them into transitional hotel rooms just until they get into whatever housing. Am I incorrect in that, Ms. Adams?
That, that is a good, a good basic understanding of coordinated entry. We, one of the, the main components of coordinate, the 211 coordinated entry is going to be the, the housing navigator piece, who's going to be doing interviews and screening with clients to determine their unique needs and move them towards housing. It is going to rate someone's vulnerability, which gives them a vulnerability score and places them either higher or lower in the priority pool, which puts them closer or further away to those housing wait lists. The thing with coordinated entry that is unfortunate is that, as the system is currently set up, only the top 7% qualify for housing. So this particular, this particular program is expanding the ability of Snohomish County to provide temporary transitional shelter, as you mentioned, to those people while they're waiting on those housing wait lists to come up for them. So while it doesn't necessarily screen out things that would require treatment or life coaching scenarios and wraparound services, it does move people from homelessness into a safe, stable housing situation. One of the requirements of coordinated entry is that people have to continue to be in contact with their housing navigator, and if they don't make contact with that housing navigator, they fall out of coordinated entries. So that's like, after 30 days, if they haven't heard from that person, they are no longer part of the coordinated entry system and would have to call the, call 211 back and restart that process over. They wouldn't necessarily lose their place, but they would just be removed from the priority pool for that time.
So, thank you. So I, I know people that have called 211 and utilized that system, and one in particular, single mom with young kids, and that system, this whole program helped, because she, of the young kids and everything else, she was elevated to the, more towards the top of the list as, you know, needing to get some housing right away. So my experience with that is that that's more the typical type person that's going to be moved to the top of the list, not the, the single person who's just a drug addict and is struggling with, you know, his life, his or her life choices at the time. So, for, I hope that helps.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Councilmember Gamble here. So your biggest concern is the vetting and the liability? And you wanted to read more about the vetting process and the liability before you could support this?
I just was reading the packet, and letter F, the agency shall not screen out, it calls it out, that there's low barrier, which is something that is different than we traditionally done. And so when you read in, and what does that mean, it spells it out, that they will not be, or shall not screen out participants based on the following criteria. A lot of them are great, this is exactly what they should want, right? Having too little or no income, having poor credit or financial history, having poor lack of rental history, having involvement with the criminal judicial system, having active or a history of alcohol or substance abuse, so active or history of substance abuse, having an impact or affected by crime, type of extent disability-related services or supports that are needed, lacking an ID or proof of U.S. residency status, or other behaviors that are perceived as indicating lack of housing readiness. So you read the list right there, there's a lot of them that are like, that's spot-on, that's exactly, but there's three, I called out key ones in there that we have always, as we're looking at, saying, well, wait a second, we want to make sure that we're not jeopardizing, you know, in our effort to do good, that we're not putting people at risk within our own community, or in our hotels, where this would be, it would be for all East County, that's why I'm asking the liability question. And I, I get what you're saying, but we're all speaking in, you know, in a very, trying to find the right word, we don't know. It's my experience, like, we're not sure, right? Rachel's not, and I get it, I totally understand. I'm just trying to, if it's, if I had a better understanding of how that process works, because we, you're saying, hey, like, wouldn't rise to the top or whatever, we're talking about serving the bottom, right? That's part of this reason, is because we're saying that, hey, we can only focus on this, this would open us up, which is fantastic. I'm just trying to make sure that when we do that, we're not opening, we're not going to do something stupid, all right? Because of, hey, there's a gap in the process and procedure that could potentially put the community at risk, that's all.
So what, what I'm, I'm hearing you say is, because we can't, we can't eliminate number 10, or number 11, or number 12, you're questioning, because- number 10, or number 11, or number 12, you're questioning, because it's on that list, are we going to be liable if any of those things cause a problem in that housing?
There's a secondary, the liability is a secondary question for me, you know? Yeah, it really is, that just is a logical, you know, question. I'm just trying to guard against doing something, doing something, but it's not even that, putting community members at risk, or those that are visiting, right? Because they're gonna be housed in the, and that's why I was very specific with my, you know, based off of those bullets I read, can, you know, even if it just assure us, based off, we looked at how we are putting them through the entry program, that, yeah, you know what, there's a high, that's not very probable, okay? I never say anything, you know, impossible, but, you know, but when I look at it, that says, well, it's important, because it was called out in the, you know, in the agenda bill, like, hey, this is low barrier, however, right? I'm just trying to understand the however, the however was supposed to give us comfort. I get that, you've got comfort with it. I don't have comfort with that, I don't understand. All I'm reading is that there is, there is a potential, I need, I wanna know how high that is, because it'd be an unintended consequence.
Councilmember Scarborough, do you have any other questions for?
No, but I have a statement on it.
Okay.
So if there's, is there something that we could ask for to bring, be brought back to us that would make you comfortable?
Councilmember, let's, so I, I understand that he'd like more information on liability and everything like that, so I, I think that that's what he's asking for. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to avoid councilmembers just kind of talking across the dais right now. So we can certainly get additional information if the?
That's what I'm asking for, is what information is, is he looking for to be comfortable with voting for?
The CD system, I asked.
Yeah. Okay. Did you have anything for the Councilmember Scarborough?
No.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
So I was looking at this, and I think I read through, and it said that this contract length is one year, is that correct?
It, it expires on June 30th.
June 30th, okay. And then do we have a, a limit of the amount of people that we can house? I didn't see that, I mean, there, there was a lot of information there, I might have missed it, but there are limited people, number of people?
Um, so when we were applying for these funds, and we were looking at the amount of funding that was available for the funding period of between December 1st and through June 30th, we, we anticipated being able to provide housing for up to 20 people across East County every night during that funding period. Now, some of those months have gone away, and while I can backdate our contract to reimburse some of VOA's costs that may fit the scope of work, they have not begun these services yet. So the, the, the amount of time that's left to expend these funds is decreasing. So it will be able to potentially help quite a few more people in a shorter amount of time, or potentially not be able to expend the funds in total by the end of the funding period.
Okay, and then one last question with, I kinda just put down here, hands on that, resources. Is there somebody that makes contact with them at these hotel rooms, or meetings that have to be attended, knowing that it's low barrier, I'm just trying to get a little definition of, to make this more comfortable for us? Are there certain things that we can do to make sure that we are providing these services and keeping eyes on them while they're there to help them through this process? Because my experience tells me, when some people are left alone, they don't make very good decisions, and without an actual roadmap of what to do and having contact with them can be a recipe for problems.
Yeah, so in order to remain housed, and in this program, they have to remain part of the coordinated entry 211 system, be working with a housing navigator, and have an active housing action plan. So those are kind of the rails on which housing is contingent. So if they are no longer working with their housing navigator, no longer working on their housing action plan, and no longer part of the coordinated entry system, because they have not been calling their housing navigator or coordinated an entry, then this, then they will most likely be exited out of this program.
Okay, I'm sorry, you did that earlier, I just didn't quite catch it.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I don't think it was clearly pointed towards that concern, so thank you for helping me clarify that.
Thank you. And then, so with that, if they are not making those calls or having those connections, it's 30 days before they're?
Yes.
Removed? I think that's, I'm okay with the 20 people, I'm, I like the fact that it goes till June, so we can look at it and see what kind of success there is. 30 days, somebody not having any contact with anything, that's, I think, the one that bugs me. I would love to see that at like 10 or 15 days. If you're not making contact, there's a lot of damage that can be done in 30 days to that person that needs resources. So that was the one thing that really kind of stood out to me. That's all, thank you. Does that make sense?
Yep. I saw your flag going up, which is why I'm looking at you. Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
Thank you. My concern here is the low barrier issue. I just don't see it as being a, a good thing to not call someone to, to accountability in order for them to, to get help. I wish I was as eloquent as Jason with the, the reasoning, because I do understand what you're saying, and I, I know that there's two of us who haven't spoken yet, so if you guys could get your, your thoughts in here, because this is a big decision. I know it's only until the end of June, but enabling someone is not something that I'm a fan of, so look forward to your opinions.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, is there any more deliberation, or, go ahead, councilmember? I can't, yeah, there you go.
All right, there we go.
There's a trick button there.
Um, I have loved and appreciated the deliberation, this has been a great experience in, in hearing two really well explained and well, kind of argued is the wrong word, but as I was sitting here thinking, I recalled a story that was told to me a few months ago, and I believe it was about this program, it was about a mother who was being abused by her spouse, and she had put off kind of leaving the, the father for a while with their two kids. And I believe that this fund is what allowed her to escape the house with the kids and get a hotel. And I, I bring that story up not to kind of pull on heartstrings, but because what I distinctly remember about that story was that it was very difficult for her to get into that system, to get approved for those funds, which, at that time, when I heard the story, I was like, wow, that blows my mind, you think that that's the perfect example of when something like this would be a godsend? So Rachel, I wanna back it up to, to something you said earlier about the coordinated entry program, did you say it's about 10%?
It's about 7% that's housed through the waitlist on coordinated entry.
7% of the wait?
Is? Actually, so coordinated entry will allow people to be put on waitlists, and from those waitlists for housing, 7% are typically housed through coordinated entry. The rest works towards rapid resolution as a path towards housing to connect people to services, or other alternative methods of housing them. So the, the coordinated entry system itself only houses about seven out of every 100 people who call 211.
Thank you very much. And I heard a, a number, was it 20 earlier, that was about how, how many people maximum that we'd be able to house until June with these amounts of funds, or that's just?
If we were, yeah, if we, if we had been utilizing the funds from December 1st to June 30th, the amount of funding over the funding period would have averaged about 20 individuals per night across all of East County. Now, the funding period has, has shrunk a little bit, and services have not started, so that will impact the amount of services that can be offered, or the amount of funds that can be spent.
Awesome, thank you. And then with how well versed you are in human services, what other kind of programs exist like this for a situation like that, mothers, that she could call, call upon for help? Maybe she is, maybe the, the father's the only one that, that has income in the household, and if she didn't have access to something like this, she wouldn't have had the money at all. Are there any other kind of federal programs, or, or anything that?
Uh, there are not many programs out there that will supply emergency hotel funding. We've been lucky through the pandemic to have some emergency housing funding available. Ms. Lundstrom was here from Take the Next Step to discuss some of the, the 16 families that were flooded out of River's Edge, and the, the county being able to supply funding to house those families had to do with some of that pandemic funding. So it's, it's kind of a unique opportunity to consider a program like this, and, and see what kind of good it can do. But I do understand the concern around low barrier. If, if it helps, I'd be happy to relay the, the concerns of the council to Snohomish County, and see if we can come up with some kind of compromises on, on those items that the council is concerned about, or I'm happy to ask the Partnership to End Homelessness Communications Committee to come and give their presentation on the coordinated entry system generally, and how that works, and overview of the different pathways, and, and how 211 works. So I'm happy to do as a council would have me do on this.
So just go ahead and add in here, Rachel, that I, I think it would be good to have a presentation on, on the various systems, that, that thing that, however council decides they would like to go on this, or request more information, I think, I think having that presentation would be helpful. One of the things here is that this is not no barrier housing, these are people who are unhoused in the Sky Valley community, and also in Monroe. Low barrier means that there is a barrier or expectations, it's that they're working with 211 and a housing navigator, that's different than no barrier. And it sounds to me like Councilmember Hanford, and maybe Councilmember Walker have mentioned some folks that have gone through the program, so maybe there's a need to, as part of that discussion on that, you know, on the different systems that exist, to talk about, you know, the differences between no barrier and low barrier, maybe a little bit better understanding of, of the clientele, the people who enter that sort of system, so that we're not, you know, so we have a better understanding of who the clients are, what their backgrounds are, and what the successes have been. So just kind of thinking of a few things there. Councilmember Walker, did you have anything further? You still have the floor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to think about the, the low barrier aspect of it, because I am like Councilmember Gamble, I'm very much a treatment-first kind of mentality around the substance abuse issues. But to me, with the, the 7% acceptance rate, it seems like, though it's low barrier, that's a, a pretty good barrier to me, and considering that I, I believe I've heard that police, or, or police often use this as well, I also give their judgment a lot of trust. So between the time it would take from tonight and after Snohomish County, if they're willing to come give us a presentation on a coordinated entry, I am leaning towards being willing to, to trust the barrier of the 93% for now, just because, again, some of those testimonials, I would think that out of 100, the seven that would make it into a program like this are the, the mothers who may be the victims of abuse. So anyways, yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah, and I, I would add that if I'm understanding Rachel correctly, so I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but these are people that are getting help, so not being, you know, while there are, while the barrier is low, there are people that would be getting help, right? So that's different than anybody being on the street today that we're getting phone calls about in the downtown, that, you know, maybe there are people that are living in their cars, that sort of arrangement, or, or living condition, these are people that we would be able to help, again, that 93% bar, like you're talking about, these are people that we would be able to get off the street and get them into a coordinated continuum of care, is what they call it at the county. It's, it's a entry point into a continuum of care, as opposed to them being on the streets and not having that point of contact, where, hey, I know where this person's sleeping tonight, we're gonna make contact tomorrow, and we're gonna try to help this person through this program. So for me, you know, I understand the concerns that have been raised, I'm not voting on this, I'm just sharing some perspective. This is, this, to me, is different than no barrier, it is low barrier housing, it is emergency housing, in fact, and it would expire on June 30th right now, so there's just some thoughts that I would have. Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
So first, I really appreciate the various opinions, I'm glad we can all share how we feel together. I'm leaning toward Kevin and Jake on this. I think the 211 entry process protects us, first of all, these people have been vetted, I think it's a short term, if it starts now, it would be maybe four months if it's June 30th. We're talking about potentially 20 people. Monroe is known for caring for people, we take care of people here, and we're known for that. I think that this is an opportunity for us to continue some of that work, good work that we're doing to protect people. And it's not just help, blanket help, it's help with expectations. They have people that are looking after them and expecting them to get better and do some of this work in their recovery. So I have a tendency to sort of lean toward these things anyway, because I do believe in helping people when we can, if we have, I know it's, it's a hefty price tag, I get that, and I appreciate that everyone is trying to be a good steward of, of what we're doing here with our financial, with our budget, but I do support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I, I will be voting in favor, but I completely support your concerns and your concerns, Councilmember Fulcher and Gamble. And I do want to see us as a city having good safeguards, so that we're helping, not just, so that we're helping who we need to help, and prioritizing those that need it the most. In looking at, the, Councilmember Walker brought up about the domestic violence, and on page 21, the project shall serve eligible participants only, B, Juan B is fleeing or attempting to flee violence, domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, it goes on and on. So I, I think this is gonna be a good fit for now, for the next, it's only what, four months now?
Four months.
And, but I do share your concerns. But, so for the future, I, I share those concerns as far as anything the city is doing.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough? Just my voice.
Okay, I, I agree with what Councilman Hanford just said, and Councilman Walker, and Ms. Beaumont, and, and Councilman Gamble, a concern, I share his concerns. I'll be voting for it, because, again, see what happens between now and June, when we reevaluate, I would, I hate to see the people that need it be penalized because we're afraid of one, or one of the seven being, or more, being the bad apple, so that's how I'll be voting on it.
All right, thank you.
This time.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker? I'm sorry, Councilmember Fisher? His sign's right in front of you.
I know, it's confusing, we look.
We look a lot alike.
No.
I'm willing to try just about anything once, um, for four months. So I think that, um, it's a safe thing to see if it works. I would just really, really like us to get some good data of these next four months and see if it's something that we can continue or not. But I'm definitely open to trying some things. Uh, we heard a lot of concerns up here. Some were mine, some were your guys''. Uh, but again, a four-month stint and hopefully get some decent data and, um, give it a go and we can make improvements or we can not approve it next time, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah. No, I, first of all, I just appreciate the conversation and, and it doesn't just, we need to have these conversations, you know? My biggest thing is I can't vote, it's, it's just a, and I don't know, it's integrity or a data thing with me. I can't vote for something when I don't understand a major part of this, which is we're all putting a lot of stock into the coordinated entry program and it may be the best thing since sliced bread, but nothing has been presented to council on it, right? So that in and of itself to make a decision, and that is the fundamental thing that we're saying we're using as a, hey, we got a lot of confidence. Look, we all have a lot of confidence in our police department. I totally get that. Police department is, is not the one doing the entry and the screening, right? They're using, that's a, that's a partnership. So that's why, and I, and I get it and I hope it works great. Um, but then I'll also remember because all the testimonies you're talking about are exactly why we've gone down this road and we want to find programs like this. I totally get it. We've also had, I'll never forget it, a recovering addict that came and spoke right in front of us and tell, and, and say to us, don't approve programs and policies and things that basically give me the opportunity to just focus on my addiction. There needs to be some accountability. The only way that I got clean and that I'm actually alive today is because that happened to me as an individual and they hit rock bottom and then we were able to connect him to a treatment program, right? So I'm just looking at this going, hey, is this counter to what we've seen, you know, in the past? That's all. I, I get it, it's gonna pass in the majority. I would really like to see as the mayor, you know, if we can, if we can bring it back, if we get the review of the program so we can get a little bit of, I will not be voting for it because I just, I need that before I would give a, you know, an affirmative. All the other good stuff is fantastic. It's really good, but the other is too much of a, it's too much of a wild card for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter?
I'm glad we all got a couple of chances to talk. Um, what I do want out of this wonderful discussion and the reason that I love serving with you guys is that the county hears us, that we are not happy with all the questions that are unanswered. So that is what I want relayed to the county after all of this. And I also did hear in the discussion that there is a program coming up that will not have this low barrier issue. Um, I know Rachel spoke about that at one point. So knowing that, thank you guys. I appreciate your hearts for everybody, but I'm gonna vote against it.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
This is the last thing I'm gonna say, unless Councilmember Gamble says something particularly flammable. Um, no, I, I was just gonna say the same thing, uh, without your kind of courage to, to bring the point forward, um, at the very beginning, this kind of great conversation couldn't happen. Um, and I just honor and respect the position that, that you're in as well, being willing to, to take a vote that, uh, at face value, someone could say, oh, that's not the, uh, I don't know, it, it's not the most ethical, that's the wrong way to put it, but, um, you know what I mean. So I, I honor your position, um, and I appreciate that you brought the points forward. I would love to say that if this does pass tonight, that we follow up on getting a presentation.
Yep, we will.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, so the, the takeaways, and, and again, this is, we still have a vote to go through, but we will have, uh, staff have a presentation done on this program, the coordinated entry program, the continuum of care, uh, just so that the council and the community have a opportunity to hear more about it.
Yep.
And I'll replace ethical with benevolent and I'm done.
All right. Any other, uh, discussion on the motion? All right, there being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so motion passes five-two with Councilmembers Foulter and Gamble voting against. All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, Councilmember Reports, and I will just randomly pick Councilmember Walker. I like to bump around and get different people in different orders.
My voice again. Um, was honored to, uh, go to Olympia with my fellow council members, um, last week to meet with our representatives and, and talk about kind of the city's legislative agenda, uh, as well as attend some of, uh, the Association of Washington City's trainings. Um, it's an excellent opportunity to network and, uh, both with other electeds around the state and with our, uh, legislators. So I just, I appreciate, uh, the city staff for making that come together. And, uh, yeah, the, the other thing that I wanted to mention, because I want to stay short, is congratulations to the, the two new businesses, I believe, that have opened in Monroe recently, um, or, or maybe not new businesses, but ribbon cuttings that I've seen. Uh, one of them was, uh, on Main Street and, uh, always loved seeing, um, our spaces fill out there. It was the, uh, VFW, uh, post and, and it's an art gallery. So I attended the ribbon cutting for that and was super impressed with the work that they put into it. Other than that, I'm gonna let, uh, my other council members, um, talk and, you know, thank you guys.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on. I have a very loud voice anyways, I'm gonna step way back. All right, um, also attended, um, Association of Washington City's conference and, um, met with our, uh, elected officials on the Hill. It was really wonderful trip. It was great to be there with all of our wonderful council. And, um, we also had, um, Zach Humphries and Deborah Knight with us and it was just a really, really, and Rachel Adams was there and presented, um, did a great job representing some of, um, some of the asks and, and, uh, support that we are looking for. So it was a wonderful trip. Um, also last night, there was a 12th Legislative District, uh, Town Hall meeting that, uh, Councilmember Walker and I were in attendance. Did anyone else attend that? Now, Councilmember Foulter, all three of us were on. That was interesting to hear what issues, um, people in the 12th are bringing forward. Very, very interesting, and that was Gainer and Steele. And Sunday night, attended the Black History Month, uh, movie series that MEC has put on, um, saw Selma, which was very, very tough movie to watch, but very important movie to watch. And so, uh, we had a lot of folks there and that was, uh, a really good evening. Um, and I appreciate the MEC making that available. It's free, free movie series, so, yeah. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, I attended the AWC Action Days in Olympia with the other, with five other councilmembers. We were missing you, Councilmember Gamble. It was a great, uh, team building time and, uh, it was very good meeting with the legislators and, and well worth it, uh, with the time that we could spend on the Hill. I wanted to thank Councilmember Walker for being in attendance at the VFW Art Gallery ribbon cutting because I had every intention of attending and somehow missed the date, so, um, I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Hi there. Um, so I was also at AWC Action Days, um, drove some of these people around, so, which was joy. Yeah, just going up there and as a city and kind of a focus front with all of us, um, to talk to our state elected officials about some of our needs was pretty cool. Um, a different note, I usually don't talk about my personal life, but it was a very public thing. So unfortunately, my mother was struck and killed on Highway Two Monday the 12th. Um, I bring this up because of the support that the community had brought to my family. So amazing thing, I know, I've always known that I live in a really great community and this week, um, it was very apparent that we do have a great community. Our police department was amazing, fire department was amazing. So I just really, really appreciate, um, everybody's support. I would like to have, uh, Chief Jolly come to my house, not in uniform and in civil clothes and ask me for a beer instead of the, the other that I experienced earlier in the week. So, um, just to thank the entire community, the staff here, all of you guys, um, for just helping my family get through some, some tough times. It's, uh, not the only week that I've ever had that's tough and it probably won't be the last. So, um, I kind of look at some of these things. One of my sayings is, um, all of these things just make us better resources for humanity. So that's one of the things. I'm pretty open to talk to anybody about anything and this is one of them also. Um, I just kind of put out there, I've been through a lot of stuff in my life and if anybody ever needs to talk about anything, um, I'm, I'm willing to do it. Um, cocktails or coffee, either one. So, um, just thanks again to the people that are online or might listen to this in a recording and then everybody that's here. So thank you from me and my family.
Councilmember Fisher? Uh, Councilmember Scarborough?
Well, I was also in Olympia, saw this, did all the comments, it was a great time, great team building, great experience, uh, meeting our legislators and talking to them over dinner and in the Capitol. And I think I enjoyed my conversation with Mr. Hawkins, probably the best because that's the one time we spoke the most with any of them, it wasn't at dinner. And, uh, it was a, it was a good experience. I haven't been for a few years, COVID and whatever else, but it was a good experience.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter?
Olympia and 12th Legislative District thing online last night. Did it all. Thank you for being great people to serve with. You guys are awesome. And our city staff that was there, I felt like Monroe was just so, so well representative. It was nice to be part of the well-oiled machine.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, I was bummed I had to, uh, to miss. I know it's one of my favorite, uh, deals. Um, yeah, I, uh, obviously have been gone a few weeks, uh, and I just want to echo some of the comments that Kyle made. I wasn't gonna share, but, um, it is, you know, probably, I lost my father and my wife also, also was diagnosed with breast cancer within the last month. And, uh, and this community is amazing. I haven't had to make a meal in three weeks. Just, uh, the support has been, uh, fantastic and just truly, truly appreciated. And we, we live in a special place, so I appreciate serving with each and every one of you.
Thank you. So for staff and department reports, uh, the reports are in your packets. If anybody has any questions about them, please let me know. Okay. Feel free to follow up with me and Deborah if you've got any questions after, uh, later that you haven't thought of right now on the reports and we'll follow up with you. Um, we're gonna go on to Mayor and City Administrator Reports. So, Deborah, I'm sorry, Administrator Knight, extended agenda?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council. A couple of items coming up on the extended agenda, so looking forward to next week, which is the 27th. We do have a P3 committee planned. Um, there will be a presentation on the downtown parking assessment, uh, by Derek Hahn, one of our, uh, engineers and Scott Peterson, our city engineer. And then a discussion item that's being brought forward by Kate Turtolo on the comprehensive plan and vision policy. So if you're on the P3 committee, um, you can look forward to hearing more about both of those issues. Uh, looking then at the regular business meeting for the evening, we will have a swearing in ceremony, a public hearing on the 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Plan, and then on the consent calendar, uh, the standard items, accounts payable, meeting minutes and payroll, uh, then a resolution that expresses support for the Reconnecting Communities Grant, that's for our federal grant for, uh, railroads. And then adopting the ordinance for the Shoreline Master Program amendments, uh, that'll be coming back to you next week. The committee and board and commission work plans, so just a summary of what the other committees did that you're not a part of. If you're interested in knowing what those committees will be discussing, you'll be able to see everything all together, um, next week on consent. A resolution 2024-04, uh, the 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Plan, so following the public hearing, um, that will be on the consent agenda. Uh, a grant acceptance for a law enforcement vehicle pursuit technology grant and then a resolution to sole source, um, that technology. And then extension, uh, for use of the Fairgrounds Dog Park from Ben Swanson and then authorizing the mayor to sign the 2024, uh, Skyhawks Sports Camp Agreement. I think I read in that agenda, Phil, that that's 15 years we've been doing Skyhawks, so an extended period of time, yeah. It's amazing how long. Under unfinished business, the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Guiding Principles with Kate Turtolo and then an initial meeting for the Monroe 30 annexation. That was an action that council took, um, this evening to set that for the next meeting. And then under new business and ordinance, um, for the downtown properties funding, that'll be first reading by Nikki Hasser. And then the rest of the, um, agenda, uh, will be, um, as usual, department reports, mayor administrator reports and an executive session if needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
I will be gone on the 27th. I will be out of town and I am the chair of the P3 committee, so, sorry about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, the agenda says Hanford absent on the 5th, but unless there's some plans that I don't know about, I will be here.
Julie, Julie called you, there's a special event that I, that you're not supposed to carry over from last week.
Yeah, I think it's a carryover from last week.
Might be a carryover from last year.
Thank you.
I think it is actually. Last year, I was on town this, that day.
Where are we going?
All right. Follow me up on that.
Next one.
The next week. For, uh, March 5th, then we will have a Public Safety Committee meeting and then we do have a regular study session and the, um, main event is the annual report from Judge Ness.
All right, any questions about the, about that item? Sorry, I don't have my thing in front of me here. Okay.
I, I do. There's another slide coming. There should be. Oh, there it is. Uh, just wanted to put together in kind of an easy to read, uh, table, at least tables are easy for me to read as the staff will tell you here. I love a table. Um, so I just wanted to put together where we're at with the SR522 widening project and the various budgets that have been, um, adopted and proposed. And so what you see here is, um, the previous budget that was adopted in 2023 for, um, SR522 widening. Uh, and originally there was, um, 33.6 million, um, 15 million of that planned in the current biennium and then 16 in the next biennium. Excuse me, and you can see in the governor's proposal that there's another million dollars that's been added. That was spread over in the governor's budget over the two bienniums, 15.7 and 16. And then we have a House proposal and a Senate proposal. The good news here is there's still 34.6 million and that's good, um, for those council members that were in Olympia. Uh, we heard repeatedly that costs have gone up and that there were gonna be projects that were not going to be funded. The 520 bridge was not funded, so 522, um, is still on the funding list. They just divided up the money, um, slightly different than the governor's budget. I actually think that House and Senate proposals are probably more realistic. It's just given the, um, where the project currently is, um, in the, um, design and construction and acquisition of right-of-way phases, um, this looks pretty realistic, at least from my perspective. We're talking about 10.4 billion, um, in the next biennium, or excuse me, in the, yes, current bi- upcoming biennium and then, um, in the next biennium, 15.9 and then in the closeout, 5.5. So good news is the money's still in the budget and it's in every budget, governor's, House and Senate. So I expect that, um, those, uh, our 12th, um, delegation is doing a, a great job of representing us and making sure that our projects are staying at the forefront and then we're being helped by friends of, um, the 12th as well. So, yeah, it's been great and thank you to all the council members that attended and, um, really continued to push forward. The mayor was there in the previous week, um, also supporting, um, these projects. previous week, also supporting these projects, meeting particularly with Lovick and Leas, which I think were really important, again, to keep these projects in the forefront. So that's all I have for the city administrators' report. I think I've got one more slide that just provides the update to the legislative calendar and the proof that everybody who said they were there was actually there in person. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments?
Oh, I guess I should add, I should add one item, which is, I know that there were a number of bills that councilmembers have been interested in. I sent out an email like this afternoon with a list of all of those bills and kind of their current status, too. It was too much to put on this particular slide.
Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yes, yes, perfect.
That was actually.
Jake needs to be in front.
I was going to say, I don't know who put the short guy in.
I know. We should have switched places.
Should have worn your lips.
Can someone Photoshop me up?
Okay. You know, I was going to ask any, any questions, comments, or good jokes, and I did not say good jokes, but you came up with jokes. Okay, let's go on to the mayor's report. I did attend, so you can take a look at Monroe this week in the packet. I did attend the VFW. I just missed the ribbon cutting. I was there about a half hour later or so. But, yeah, happened to go there and saw folks buying art and everything, so that was, that was cool. And been doing other work, but just not coming to me right now in my head, because it's just not right now. I need more coffee. Yeah, so if anybody's got any questions for me, let me know. I am already thinking of the next item on the agenda. So for the listening public, we have two things tonight. We have an executive session, and then we have a closed session. So the way this is going to work is that the executive session has to occur during a regular meeting, you know, during the meeting. We are going to go into executive session. We will then come back out of executive session. I will then adjourn the meeting. Council may take action following the executive session. After the meeting is adjourned, we will then go into a closed session, and the closed session is on collective bargaining. These are two different sessions. For the executive session, I'll be announcing extensions if necessary. Those announcements of extensions on time that I'll report for the record in a moment here will be shared with Clerk Wykoff, who will then go ahead and announce those extensions on the record, both in this room for people who are still here, and also online. When we're done with that executive session, again, adjournment and then closed session. For the closed session, there will not be defined amount of time, and there will be no adjournment following that. We will also not be announcing extensions of time since there's no time associated with the closed session. So with all that said, we are now going to move into an executive session for potential litigation, pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, subsection 1, subsection little i, for an initial 10 minutes with potential, with action, potential action to follow the executive session. So we are now in executive session for 10 minutes.
Executive session has been extended three minutes. Executive session is extended four minutes.
Okay, we are now out of executive session. Council has no further action to take unless there's objection from the council. We are adjourned. All right, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.